Under communication.
Under communication, I think Ms. Nicholson has something she'd like to add.
Yeah, I know everybody's aware of the tragedy that happened in Connecticut and the school. It affected lives forever were changed. And I thought if we could just stand in silence and remember and respect for that. Thank you very much.
Item 1A, under student recognition, is under communication of student recognition. We actually got the volleyball team here tonight, also the golf team. If Lindsey would like to come down, then we'll let you present your awards to the volleyball team.
And just on behalf of the volleyball team, I'd like to thank the board and Superintendent Smith for their constant support, and of course, our athletes and their families for everything that they've done for us this year. During this past season, we were the All-A Regional Champions, and we were also the District Champions, and we were able to go on to the semifinals of the regional tournament this year, among many other weekly accomplishments that our girls achieved. So, we'd like to recognize our team members. Many of them are not here tonight, they're busy doing other things, but we'll still announce their names anyways. Kelsey Nicholson. Eric Coleman. Rachel Hayes. Emily Sizemore. Kaylee Turner. Dana Turner. Kendra Bingham. Sarah Gabbert. Michaela Westerfield. Angel Farmer. Morgan Hornsby. Samantha Strong. Raylan Creech. Tyra Jones. Sierra Skurlow. Adrian Hudson. Ariel Sandlin. Beth Neely. And Sierra Crowe. And behalf of the volleyball team, we would just like to thank the school community and the community at large for all of their support, so thank you.
Okay, next we have the golf team. Ms. Moore?
We would like to also take this time to thank the board and Superintendent Athletic Department for all that's been done for the golf team this year. First, we've got two team representatives here tonight. Our middle school team, this makes it the third year that we've competed as a team at the middle school state level. Two years ago, we finished fourth place in the state. Last year, we finished runner-up in the state, and this year, we finished the state champions at the middle school level. And we have a lot of sickness out within our community and our kids, so I know we're gonna have a short few kids here tonight, but Dylan House. Chase Carroll. Trey Rose. Tanner Morgan. You got one just now, your home is sick, just stand up here, just wait. Tanner Harris. Reed Aitman. And Zack Norris. Zack Norris also was overall individual winner in the state tournament. So, this is our middle school representatives. High school, Ben Morgan. My say is Ben walks up here, our high school program this year, we finished pretty good. We were All-A Regional Champions, also All-A State Champions. We were 19-0 in competition, head-to-head competition this year. We were Appalachian Cup Champions for the fifth year in a row, and we also made another trip to the KHSA State Tournament as well. So, we've got to stay. Blake Combs. Reed Aitman. Zack Norris. Jacob Anderson. Cody Powell. Darren Hickman. Travis Angel. Casey Cameron. And Logan Estes. And this is our high school and middle school golf team for this year. We'd also like to thank, once again, we'd like to thank some individuals. At this time, we'd like to ask Mr. Keith Hayes to come up. We'd like to thank our principal of Jackson County High School. To present. Mr. Stephen Gabbert, principal at Jackson County Middle School. And then our athletic director, Mr. Wes Bishop. Now then, we would like, if our board members would care to, like for y'all, to come down here in front too, as we're announcing. Ms. Debbie Nicholson. And then our athlete director, Mr. Wes Bishop. Now then, we would like, if our board members would care to, like for y'all, to come down here in front too, as we're announcing. Ms. Debbie Nicholson. Mr. Lindsey Leir. Mr. Ronnie Hicks. And Mr. Dern. On behalf of the golf team, we appreciate all the support y'all did this year.
If you would please go over there.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Later on in your agenda, you actually have action items to consider approving, refinancing two of your bond issues. And you should have in front of you a two-page handout that I want to read with you prior As your financial advisor, we always monitor all of your outstanding bond issues for the potential of refinancing. And whenever we consider a refinancing, there's two things that have to happen. Number one, interest rates have to be lower now than they were when you issued the bonds. And the second thing, you have to be close to the ten-year call date. Well, we currently have identified your 2004 and 2005 bond issues that are definitely candidates for refinancing. And if you'll look on the first page of the handout, the 2004 bonds were originally issued for improvements at McKee Elementary School, and the average rate we're paying on these bonds is 4.3 percent. The 2005 bonds were originally issued for the Tiner Elementary School project, and the rate we're paying on that is 4.15 percent. Assuming that the board would like to proceed with the refinancing, we're currently projecting that we can issue new bonds to pay off the old bonds, and our new rate will average about 2.1 percent. So, you can see, we're about 2 percent lower in interest rates now than we were back in 2004 and 2005. Now, if you would flip to the second page, and this is where we show you what your real savings are. And if you'll look on the left-hand side of the page, where it says prior 2004 and prior 2005, that's what we're currently paying on each one of those bond issues. And if you go over to the middle section, where it says new 2013 refinancing, that's what we're projecting our new payments will be. So, the far right-hand column, this is our projection of your real net savings. And you can see, on the average, we're projecting that we can save about $16,000 per year for the remaining life of the bonds, for a grand total savings of $210,000. So, whenever we look at a refinancing, the Department of Education has minimum requirements before they will approve a refinancing. We're well over those minimum requirements, so I'm happy to be able to present to the board that if you would like, it's just like refinancing your mortgage, we currently need all of the state federal requirements to do the refinancing, and if the board would desire, we can lock in about $210,000 in the sections. And if you recall, back last January, I think we had refinanced your 2003 bonds. So, as long as rates stay low, the closer we get to these call dates, it's kind of good. Now, I will point out, and I mentioned to Mr. Smith earlier, once we do these refinancings, we've pretty much refinanced everything that's eligible as far as your bond issues are concerned. And the good news is, once we do this, we've got very low interest rates on every one of your outstanding bond issues. Any questions?
I think the next bond we have material will be a 120-20.
Yes. So, right now, once we can lock in these savings, we're gonna be pretty much status quo, and so we're several years down the road before we really open up for any new opportunities. But the good news is, we can lock these savings in, and that's a good thing for the district. You know, these are kind of tough times right now, and anytime we can save a dollar, you know, it's a good thing.
Have any questions, Mr. Lance? We have to go into this next iteration.
They were discussing the process of going ahead and through these.
Well, if you would, first, as the board, we have that top resolution to adopt. And I can either read that into the record if you would like. It's a resolution of the Board of Education of the Jackson County School District initiating the refinancing process in order to refund and retire school building revenue bonds, Series 2004 and 2005, originally issued to finance the projects, confirming the acceptance of an offer of assistance from the School Facility Construction Commission, authorizing and approving the execution of a contract leasing option with the Jackson County School District Finance Corporation, and any further necessary instruments, and approving the plans of refinancing said project generally.
So, I would say we need to read the motion.
We would just need a motion, a second, to adopt that resolution as read.
Do they agree?
Just, yes. I ran it into the record, we would just need a motion and a second to approve it as read into the record.
The motion approved to adopt the resolution, authorize the Jackson County School District Finance Corporation to issue refunds for revenue bonds, and approve the capital plan in question.
Make a motion.
Second.
Yes. Do you want to just go ahead and leave him through?
So, the next thing that we need to do is we would have a motion, a second, to temporarily reset the board meeting, so that we can call to order the Finance Corporation.
The motion to reset the way of session to the Jackson County School District Finance Corporation.
I'd motion a second.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now we can call to order the meeting of the School District Finance Corporation. And once we meet as the Finance Corporation, just to refresh the board's memory, the first thing we do is we always confirm our officers, and the officers are, the chairman of the board is the president of the corporation, the vice chairman of the board is the vice president, and Mr. Smith is the secretary, and your board treasurer is the Finance Corporation treasurer. So, the first action that we would take as the Finance Corporation would be a motion, a second, to confirm those officers.
I move to confirm.
And then the final order of business is to actually adopt the resolution as the Finance Corporation, and again, Mr. Chairman, it'd probably be appropriate for me to read that resolution into the record. It's a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Jackson County School District Finance Corporation relating to an approving for the issuance of $3,730,000 principal amount, subject to a permitted adjustment of $375,000, of school building refunding revenue bonds, Series of 2012, the refunding bonds, in accordance with Sections 58.180 and 162.120 through 162.290 and 162.385 of Kentucky nearby statutes, for the purpose of refunding at or prior to their respective maturities, the outstanding Jackson County School District Finance Corporation School Building Revenue Bonds, Series of 2004, dated December 1st, 2004, and Jackson County School District Finance Corporation School Building Revenue Bonds, Series of 2005, dated December 1st, 2004, to prior issues, through deposit and investment in the escrow fund and the net proceeds of the refunding bonds, providing for the payment of the principal amount of interest on said prior issues as the same mature of a redemption in advance of maturity, providing for the creation of certain funds to affect the feasement of the rights of the registered owners of the bonds of the prior issues, and the transfer of certain amounts into certain funds, providing for the payment of said refunding bonds and the interest thereon, providing for the rights of the registered owners of said refunding bonds and enforcement thereof, and providing for an advertised public competitive sale of said refunding bonds. That was a mouthful. We would need a motion, a second, to adopt that resolution as read.
Motion, second.
And then we would need a motion, a second, to adjourn the Finance Corporation. Thank you all, you have a good evening.
Very impressive.
Same to you.
With that being done, we'll move on to item 1C, which is an update on the Jackson County High School construction project, and I'll certainly have Mr. Doug Smith here tonight to do that.
Neiman, well, since we met last month, we've got the gym, got the CO on the gym certificate of occupancy from HBC, and it's currently being used, along with the corridors upstairs and downstairs of the east wing, restrooms and concession stands, locker rooms still work in progress, we're getting everything finished up in there. We've pretty much gone as far as we can. As soon as we finish, as soon as the campfire contractors finish, we'll button up classrooms and clean them up, and do our punch list, and be ready to turn the building over to the high school. We've pretty much gone as far as we can until those items are complete. That's about all I have to report. Hopefully, next month, I'll be able to report finishing up things. What would you, any questions?
Are they on target with, I mean, I said, running behind, or is this what you're expecting?
We should have been, we passed our completion dates. We're in pastime now. Except, we're still working through our mechanical punch lists in the west wing, still have some outstanding items there, and we haven't done a mechanical punch list in the east wing until we get notification from contractors that are ready for it. Haven't hit a projected date yet, so can't get projected. There's really two or three weeks' worth of work in the overhead still yet to do, from what I see, if they get on and get it done. That's a big one.
How's the earth looking about me?
Earthwork's come along very well. In fact, it's complete with the exception of the topsoil, and we're just waiting for a few dry days. They tried to move some this morning, moved a few loads this morning, and it's just still a little wet, so wait on that, but actually, there's two days left to work up there, and as soon as we get dry, the topsoil dry enough to place, we'll be done up there. That's gone really, really smoothly. We've had great work from our contractor. We have not had a single discrepancy reported by the special inspectors. We've done real well with our progress on the farm. We're starting to get in our shop drawings from the general trades contractor to start construction of the backstops and the dugouts. That's looking good to get started on time on that.
What about steps? Did anything with steps you?
As far as the...
Getting them fixed, yeah. The steps up the ramps here, parking ramps.
But you mean up to the ball field? That's part of the general trades.
Anybody else have any questions, Mr. Smith? Could you state, there's a couple minutes left.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next item is 1B, updated personnel substitute list. That's included as an attachment, as always, in the agenda. We have a couple people who requested to speak here in communication. We have Rebecca Webster and Jordan Cox. Would you please come up and agree to your presentation?
Thank you for having us tonight. My name's Rebecca Webster, and Jordan Cox is with me, he needed to step out for a moment. But we are here representing Air Medical Truck Transport Company. Our company is an air medical transport company. We have bases all over Kentucky. The closest one is in London, which is where I am based. But just to kind of tell you a little bit about why we're here tonight, we have a program called Omni Advantage, and it's a membership program. It's a bit like an insurance product, but it's a product that has recently, the company recently adopted in the past year. And what it is, Omni Advantage, is what it's called, and it's a membership program that has a fee. So, I'd like to just kind of walk you through a powerful presentation that we put together, and if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer those to the best of our ability there. Just to kind of tell you a little bit about us and the product. Here's the index of the presentation, just our mission statement, our purpose of the membership program, the agreement, the states that we sell membership in, about the coverage, the coverage map, membership plan types and costs, family coverage how to apply, payment options, application requirements, health insurance, your river card renewal, renewals, common questions, and additional questions. This is the mission statement of our company. Just so that you can see that we're uniquely positioned to serve as a partner of choice to our customers, and our authority is by providing safe, professional, and quality services while delivering measurable benefits to our investors. There you see our core values at the bottom. Purpose of membership, as you all consider this as a membership program for your employees here in the district, is to protect the community from financial hardship in the event that they have an emergency and need to be airlifted, and whether it's from a scene of an accident or an inter-facility transport, membership can save you thousands of dollars for just a single transport. The membership agreement is typically insurance companies pay out hefty amounts for patients to pay for private or out-of-network transportation, so our membership ensures that you aren't going to owe thousands after you have an emergency. When you enroll in our program, your family in Omni Advantage, Air Medical, will accept your health insurance payment as payment for any medically necessary transport by one of our aircraft.
So, I've got a quick question for you. Sorry, I'm Jordan Cox, I'm Rebecca's counterpart of us on the phone pile there. The average air medical bill is usually between $15,000 and $20,000, is what it's billed, depending on what you're flown for and what kind of care is rendered. Your insurance may pay anywhere from $5,000 to all of that, so depending on the kind of insurance you have, you may get left holding the bill. And the purpose of this program is for a small fee for the year. If you're a member, then whatever your insurance pays is what we accept as payment, and nothing else is billed.
And just to touch on that a little bit, what Jordan was saying, these are states that we sell memberships in. As you can see, the states that are covered there, for example, if you have a membership in Kentucky... in Kentucky and you're hunting, for example, in Texas, and you were to need to be airlifted after an accident or something like that, and your membership would be honored in that state or any of those states.
Exactly, that's not very up to date. It's honored in twenty-seven states now that we, we cover, so pretty much cover you anywhere you're traveling if you were to need help or which helps you.
This is a little bit about the coverage. Members are covered for any Air Methods Corporation transport regardless of the state the membership is purchased in. There are over three hundred and six covered bases in nearly all fifty states. A base means where that helicopter pretty much lives, like, for example, the closest base to us here is in London. Membership does not cover bills for hospital, ambulance services, or other air ambulance companies. That's in legal review right now to honor competitors' membership. But while most of our aircraft are helicopters, we also operate several fixed-wing airplanes as well.
And the three closest bases to you guys here would be London, and then we have Hazard and Somerset. So, the closest flight time, they're all within a fifteen-minute flight. Here, London, I think, is about an eight-minute flight time, to get their community here. And we do have an aircraft, a fixed-wing aircraft in Louisville, so that kind of comes to say to you, if, say, you had something puzzling, the doctor's wrong with you, and they wanted to send you to Cleveland Clinic or Mayo or some point, and you had to get flown, and that's when the fixed-wing aircraft would come in.
This is our coverage map. We have a dispatch center in Omaha, Nebraska, which is kind of like the brain center for the company. That's where all of our flights are dispatched out of, so like a local, for example, local EMS calls, a one-eight-hundred number that we get our dispatch center in Omaha, and then we dispatch out flights from there. Our headquarters are in Denver, Colorado. As you can see kind of on the map, we do have aircraft that are based at, excuse me, hospitals and also community bases. The, the local bases that we have here are community bases. For example, the London aircraft is based at the airport in London. So, as you can see, you're all over the place. The membership plan types and costs, these are annual fees, oh, wait, these are annual fees that reflect the price per household. The forty-nine dollars standard membership that covers a spouse and dependents up to the age of twenty-six. Thirty-nine dollars covers AAA members and receive a ten-dollar discount with a copy of a card or AAA membership. And thirty-nine dollars for groups of ten or more may call in to register a group, and they will receive a discount on their annual dues by referencing their registered group name on the application. So, if the board did decide that this is something that you wanted to look at for your employees here in the district, and of course you all would be considered as ready. Family coverage may include spouse or life partner, children up to the age of twenty-six, any children in your household including grandchildren, as long as they are under twenty-six and you're dependent. The program does not include a dependent adult like a parent or a grandparent, a child that's not a dependent, or a distant relative like in-law, cousins, et cetera. How to apply, if the board did decide that this is something that you wanted to look at for your employees, Jordan and I said we'll be happy to come over and talk with you a little bit about getting you on board, and, you know, we can enroll everyone as needed. We're happy to do that if there are any questions. How would you like to proceed with that? These are all the, the numbers. Payment options, can be check, electronic check, credit, debit card, payment over the phone. I've set it up in a very flexible way. Yeah. Just the application requirements, as you can see, copies of health insurance cards, all of those things, as you can see above. I'm glad to talk to you a little bit more back there. Here's the health insurance that we accept, the ones that we cannot accept.
And the reason we don't accept these over here, sorry to interrupt, Medicaid and patients like that, what the government pays is what we accept for a flight, so there's no reason for you to buy it, so we don't want to take your money for no reason. That's why I hear those over there. It's not, we don't want to sell them, we don't want to cover them, just...
Yes. Okay. There's a copy of the membership card, which all the members will receive, two or three weeks after the application is received, then you will receive a card, and we're working on getting a sticker too that you can put in the back of your windshield to show that you're one of our members. So, members will present that when needed. Renewals, they work on a calendar year, so if you decide to join in December, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't need to renew until next December. It works on an anniversary rather than a calendar, so it would be twelve months from the time that you sign up. There's some common questions.
What questions do you guys have for us? Do you have any questions we can discuss about the, what services we provide, air medical or the membership, or anything we can talk about?
And we have copies of our cards and the brochure for the membership program too, so if you do have any questions tomorrow or a week from now, please don't hesitate to let us know, we'll answer that. And then here's some numbers and our website, if you need to go there, and there's a list of frequently asked questions on our website.
You can contact either one of us. We both kind of cross-cover this area, so you have our cards. If anybody has any questions, if they have anything to come up, we'll be available pretty much anytime. Thank you guys for having us.
Yes, thank you.
Just a little bit, those are some others and some kids, Brad, and I talked to you on Lance Mallard's line, his concern about greenhouse and what I hope we could get done today, nothing has been done as far as I know, I know it's spoken to you, and I believe we have been done. We just have reached midterms on our first two greenhouse places of the year, and it's difficult on, on, on kids as well as myself to try to teach greenhouse places when you don't have any facility, and the kids are highly concerned with it, and first and foremost, we certainly appreciate the fact that you have it, you know, very cautious with the money, and you save and cut, and save a heck of a lot of money on a lot of different areas, so I appreciate that. Even if the re-bonding came out, and that's a fundamental type of this project, and so that's just comparable, ever, ever, and I think we're playing in their face and hoping to all the concern. There are reports, I don't think they have any more to add, so thank you.
Thank you.
I will read this, David, as the members are ready.
Do you want to?
I think we need to read these, and I've been talking with Doug as well, and get some preparation for it. What's the status on getting the water line over there? Mr. Smith?
We have a plan for electric, I can wait on some water.
Right, and we've, I've put it, I've put it out for bid with a number of contractors. We've, and I went back and forth with several of them trying to get the price down as low as possible, and we've got it down to the lowest price. I discussed that with Mr. Smith today and got permission to proceed, so I'm going to turn Luis, our lowest bid, with Greg Mullis Construction, who's putting, running the water line on up the hill to the, to the ball field, so we're going to turn him loose and let him run the water line to, over to the greenhouse, put in the yard hydrants, and we should be able to have that done very shortly.
What about the electric process status?
The electric, our plan was to just come off of the pole that, where we're going to have power going on up to the ball fields there. There, there are going to be, it's going to require three-phase over to the corner where the electrician ties on there, which is basically the corner lot where the, we're going to relocate the greenhouse to. So, basically, we're just going to tie the water in and the electric in there, and that was the most cost-efficient way to do it, to provide power and electric to the greenhouse there. So, that's, that, that's been the plan all along for it, and we were kind of waiting until, we ran the utilities over there to do it as cost-efficient as possible, so that's, that's been kind of the, the plan, do it. We've got the pad leveled out there, and, and I've worked to trade out on, to put rock down there, to put a six-inch pad of DPA down for the greenhouse, so that gives us location, a good leveled lot, and a good base and utilities to it, so I think that's the final piece of the puzzle there, and be ready to relocate the greenhouse there.
Thank you. Hey, that concludes communications. We've got through the finance corporation, so our next item is the heat up set, as I prepared you.
Approval of bill of flying.
Over there.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
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 Approval of an inch from November twenty, twenty twelve, regular, finished.
Make the motion.
Yes.
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 Approval to review award bid, fuel, antifreeze, et cetera, for the remainder of the twenty twelve conducted school year.
The load meters are in your attachments, and they're in mold, looks like Park Valley oil, got parts of it, as far as transmission fluid, antifreeze, motor oil, house synthetic, looks like Richmond Petroleum, got the diesel and the gas at three cents above, is that correct this morning?
And we got one correction on there that's probably not part of yours.
Okay.
Riley Oil Company, I was talking with Bobby Madden at Bus Rodge, we have a Riley Oil Company there that has been antifreeze two-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars for a fifty-five-gallon barrel, and that is the green antifreeze, and we're weighing out the cheapest and best bid for us, that would be the best bid is for the green antifreeze goes, and then the antifreeze that we got from Park Valley, it, it will serve both kinds. It will serve the green as well as the red, but if we're going to use green, we can, we can save a substantial amount of money by going ahead and accepting this two-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollar bid with Riley Oil Company, along with everything else that's marked.
So, the antifreeze under Park Valley is the red, five-hundred-and-fifty-three, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, we need to add antifreeze Texaco, five-ninety-nine per gallon, two-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars for fifty-five gallon green to the load bids, correct?
Correct. And you also notice there that we've got a substantial savings this time. Richmond Petroleum is your best price air on gas and diesel at point zero-three cents above what the OPEC index is.
A year ago, we were getting the dime above, and the last bid was nickel, so by having our own fuel tank, we're getting some nickel savings. Without that, people didn't... Now, you're going to have two different types of antifreeze?
Yeah, you have, but a word like this, it allows us to use the green antifreeze. We can get that for two-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars for a fifty-five-gallon barrel, and then you can get the other kind, and it's Park Valley Oil. They provide the other kind at five-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars compared to Riley's. Riley's is six-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars.
Let me do engines to sound.
Right. You about have to have that flexibility with that.
What we're recommending is everything involved with addition of Riley Oil Company antifreeze Texaco, five-ninety-nine per gallon, two-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars for fifty-five gallons.
Make the motion.
Yes.
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 Approval to review award the bid for the new chiller system at Jackson County Middle School, and the current old chiller is our first problem.
The last couple of years, and probably the last five years, we've had a lot of trouble with our chiller unit at the middle school, and so we decided to remove the problem, and we've put a new chiller out for bid, and it looks, what I'm looking at, Larky's would have a low bid of eighty thousand dollars. Do you want to add anything to that, Mr. Smith?
Now, you see, we got five bids out from five different vendors, and you can see the range there of one-hundred-and-five thousand to eighty thousand of bids, and Larky's is a reputable company, and they do, have, we have dozen visits with them, passed, and they've done a good job.
And the need is definitely there, I think, Mr. Gabbard, our middle school principal would agree that we definitely needed a chiller.
Harold, I think.
Harold, I agree.
Yes.
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 Approval to allow purchase of...
Hey, this will be the second bus for purchasing this year. We'd actually purchased one last year, that was personal side bus, the district that had since from two thousand and seven, eight school year, so we definitely need a bus, and we get back on the bus and question, Mr. Smith?
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Give three to go now, I mean, that's...
Do I?
Approval of sixth reading to men's board policy, the report for the seventh is for men in total.
This just makes our mandatory policy in line with PDP capital asset guide, so it's just an update to the current law. We did the first reading of the new member deal.
The motion is there.
I move approved.
Yes.
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 Approval to update twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen established bid with food, not one page of a percent increase effective January first, twenty thirteen.
Move approved. Second?
Yes.
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 Approval to amend the contract with Crystal Thomas to provide speech language at the office search for the remainder of twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen school year.
Betty, you want to touch on that just briefly?
We, we're under a contract right now with an SLP at Sand Gap that just goes into January, and then she'll be taking off for the remainder of the year with, and that, with her pregnancy, so that contract for our Sand Gap SLP just went through January the eighteenth, and just due to some complications with pregnancy, she's going to leave early, and we'll need the SLP at Sand Gap to finish up the year, and if we amend the contract with Crystal, she can pick up Sand Gap for the remainder of the year, then we don't have to be in the hassle of trying to search for an SLP, which took us about two months to get covered this year. So, but Crystal's willing to amend the contract to come on board with us for more hours, contract for more hours, so she can cover Sand Gap as well as continue with the middle school and high school.
It's a standard contract?
Yes, it's a standard contract with it, it just expands it a little bit that she can work additional hours than what we initially had with her.
Thank you, Mary.
Yes, sir.
The motion is there.
Second?
Yes.
Approval of special service contract between the Jackson County Board of Education and Anthony Robb.
This is to do with driver trainer updates, and also training for bus drivers.
Make the motion.
Second?
Yes.
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 Approval of the Jackson County School District twenty-twelve facility plan that recommended by the Jackson County Facility Plan Committee. the Jackson County Facility Plan Committee and KEDV approved.
We met with their facilities committee, I think, back in November. They brought in, had a real good productive meeting, and this is their recommendations.
I move it approved. Say. Yes.
Prove of Jackson County School District Nutrition, Food Activity Report, twenty-twelve, twenty thirteen.
This is an annual report that's done by our health services program and also our food service program. Goes into school breakfast and lunch. It also goes into physical activity assessments at each school, so just a standard thing we do.
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
Say.
Yes. Yes.
Approve of the district court partner to registration committee for the National Science Foundation, Madison Science Partnership with the University of Texas.
This is where we're applying for a grant with PMSR, and if we receive the grant, we'll get some extra professional development monies to train our elementary and teachers. So, it's a good thing, and I'm confident the district can be a big plus for it.
Say.
Yes.
Yes.
Approve of initial bill in one seventy allocation for marketing engineering LLC.
They designed the heat in our unit for the new high school, and when we approve this, they'll be able to get a tax credit back in the heart, and so it doesn't hurt us, but it helps them. It's provided for in our RSC.
I move it approved. Say. Yes.
Make a motion. If anybody has any questions, they can ask. Make the motion for twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
I'm going to approve.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Resignation, reestablished positions.
Make a motion.
Say.
Yes. Yes.
Approve of the end of the vote sessions, process discussions, or hearings which might lead to different students intending mitigation, say KRS sixty-one point eighteen-one BSL.
Make a motion.
Say.
Yes.